Welcome everyone to the City of North Plains City Council Regular Session Meeting for Monday, June 17th, 2024 at seven. Please stand with the button.
I am the United States of America. We are here to develop and promote the stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We want your patience. We'll get started later this evening. Lori, roll call.
Thank you. Mayor Lenahan.
Here.
Counselor Fage.
Here.
Counselor Kendall.
Here.
Counselor Damon.
Here.
Counselor President Sheldon.
Present.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
And Counselor Martinez is excused this evening.
Thank you. Item six is our consent agenda. This evening, we have the regular session agenda for June 17th. And we also have the June 3rd, 2024 City Council Minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes that we need to be aware of? If none, I will entertain a motion.
Full production of the consent agenda.
Hold on a second. All right, we have a first and a second. Forgive me, I was remiss. I did not add 60, which is also a resolution 2268 updating the signers on the city bank account. So again, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carrier. Thank you. Item seven is public comments. So this is the time that we ask the public to come forward and to speak on matters that are not on the agenda. I have three cards in front of me. And Lori, do you have any emails that we need to be aware of? And then folks online?
I did not receive anything prior to tonight's meeting. I believe there's, there are a couple of people, it looks like, online who wish to make public comment.
All right. We'll start with folks here in Jesse Mays first. First up is Clint Moore, please.
10-845-Northwest-311. I'm here today to talk a little bit about Jesse May's parks. Previous, I was complaining about the pickleball, about the noise. I'd like to see if there was an update on that or something to me. There's one thing that I'd like to really stress. The park is used after hours. Today, a lady came, came to the house. Well, I was walking my dog. And she seen me come from the house and asked me for a broom. Because the basketball court and the tennis court was littered with rocks. So I went back and I gave her a broom, a push broom, and they wanted to play basketball. So this was kids night before last. There was some kids after 10 o'clock that were still out here. I don't know when the police go off, but they don't come by here at night that I see. And I pretty much keep a pretty good eye on the park. It's right out my front window. Another thing I'd like to say is walking through town, I see that there's city ordinance on tall lawns. I think that the people that I see that's not mowing their lawns or the ditch are people that just recently whacked the houses. It would be nice if they, in the newsletter, that you put the ordinance out and then that they have to mow that. And it'll look a lot better for North Plains. And I think that's about all I needed to say.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Oh.
Yes.
One more thing. The kids that walk dogs, you got an 80-pound dog and a 40-pound kid, they can't stop there. I don't know how we can address that. But I think the dog owners shouldn't let the young little kid go out and takes after other little, little dogs. And they cannot stop them. I see two little kids dragged on the, on the concrete because they were trying to stop the dog. So that was my advice.
I took notes and we'll have someone follow up on, on the pickleball and police. Okay, I'll give this to Lori. All right, next up is Greg Brown.
Good evening. My name is Greg Brown, 28525 Northwest Plains, North Plains. Follow up from our last meeting. We're hearing misinformation claims, et cetera, that were made about the no on UGV referendum. That meeting, I committed to looking into the issues that Mayor Lenahan said she had. And there was only one that she brought up, said that was the only one she was aware of. That pertained to a map that had an overlay on it of potential buildings based on the type of code or type of use the application called for. Dropped off a letter last Friday for each of you that addressed those concerns. Wanted to check tonight to see if that's sufficiently addressed concerns. Basically boiled down to, I dug out the flyer that had an overlay on the map on it. Checked it, it did have a disclaimer on it that showed that was basically a projection. Pointed out in the letter that that was very similar campaign tactics as used by the YES campaign. And no foul, no harm. We okay on this?
You received your letter today. Thank you very much.
Yeah, it was dropped off last Friday. Are we okay on this issue now? Are we going to see any more claims of misinformation?
I will not answer that question, nor will I guarantee a yes or a no on that question.
Okay, Mayor Lenahan, I want to point out that we have addressed those concerns that you voiced. You told us in the last meeting, those were the only misinformation claims you had. I trust we will not be seeing them anymore. I will also point out, as I did in the letter, that numerous information pieces put out by the YES campaign showed projections, pickleball courts, bocce courts, lakes, calls for claims that there would be full-service grocery stores. This is common campaign tactics, particularly when a disclaimer is included, which it was on the flyer that was put out.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
The other thing I want to mention tonight is in the same piece in the News Times in which misinformation and misrepresentations claimed, Mayor Lenahan, you said you wanted, were looking to find out why people voted no so heavily on the referendum. And you give a little input on that. Not a scientific poll, but based on many, many, many doorway conversations during the election. Two things really had people hot. Oddly enough, they didn't have to do with the merits of the expansion. People didn't like that. But the thing, two things that really irritated people and motivated them into voting over and over. Not over and over again, more and more people were the attempts to disenfranchise the voters through House Bill 4026, which the city was involved in, and the use of substantial outside money, which apparently had, was motivated only by fiscal interests. Seems people look very differently at that type of outside influence than they do their neighbors like myself, whose interests have to do with the good of the city, the nobility of the city. Take that as input. Those of you, I'm firmly convinced that's why we saw the turnout that we did and why the vote was so overwhelming. You might bear that in mind as you go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you for your time.
Aaron Nichols.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. My name is Aaron Nichols of 11,000 Northwest Jackson Court, Hillsborough, Oregon 97124. I didn't write anything down today. I wanted to come and say, as I said early at the meeting earlier in June, that myself and my, and the group Friends of North Plains Smart Growth is, is very committed to a good plan coming out of this, this next phase of the, of the UGV work. And we're committed to trying to help as we can. We think that would serve meetings. We'd be happy to, I would be happy, the group would be happy, other people in the group, if you don't want to talk to me, that would be fine. We'd be happy to sit down and meet with individual councilors, the council as a whole, staff members, whatever, whatever makes sense. Because I, I believe the best way forward is to work together or at least be in communication with each other. And I would be happy to facilitate that, happy to be part of that, whatever, whatever's the best way forward that we can do. I know that, that, that may not be what you, what you choose, but I want to, I want to make sure that offer is here and that I could do it in person. And so I'm here doing that. And that's, that's what I've got to say. I, I hope that we get to, to meet and talk over good ways forward too. Thank you.
Can I ask him a question?
Absolutely. Okay.
Counselor Smith, is your name?
Okay, back in April, CCI meeting.
Yes.
First thing that you, you stated, and I was listening to, was that the UGVs were all done through backdoor deals.
Oh, CCI.
Can you explain that to me?
I would have to, you'd have to, I'd have to see that exact quote.
I mean, I'd listen to it.
Okay, yeah.
And mistake.
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can go back, I can go back again.
You want to, like to admit to that why you said that?
I.
I mean.
Yeah, so I, I'd have, like, I'd have to, I'd have to see exactly what I said. Do you have the exact quote? If you do, I could, I could probably answer.
I know exactly what you said, that you said it. The process was done through backdoor deals. It was the third word that came out of your mouth.
Okay.
And it's not the first time it's been said.
Okay, well, if I said backroom deals, that was not the, my intention was not to say backroom deals. My intention was to say that the process was done without, without proper citizen input. And it was done in the majority with people who had an interest in, in the, in the land coming in or people in the city who had power in the city already. And the outreach was done in a way that I think was, was, should have been done for, for goal one, for the, the first planning ordinance. And secondly, certainly not in the way that we've seen other cities who've done a very good job in that, do, do their outreach. And I would be happy to talk about ways to do, to do good outreach, ways to reach more people, to have it so that early meetings in the, in the UGV, sending how, you know, those 40 people in the room who can, who can give input, people from in the city, people, people and neighbors. I'd be, I'd something that I would be so happy to help with. Does that answer your question?
No.
Okay, would you like, I think what I can do then is go look up that quote and then try to give you a better explanation with that, with that.
Maybe we'll step back to June last year too.
Okay, yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to give me the quotes and make sure it's me who said it, but I would, I would do, I will do my best to look better.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll email you personally, is that what you prefer, through your council email address?
That's perfect.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
I don't want to say it.
Thank you, Counselor Smith.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I don't have anything else to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. All right, Mandy Hagedorn, you have your hand raised.
Hey there, Mandy Hagedorn here. I live at 30735 Northwest Brookings Court. I have a question to the mayor that's fiscal oriented. What is the current total spend of public funds used by the city to defend HB 4026? And is the city still allocating public funds for this defense? That is it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your question. I do not have an answer for you on that. I'll have to defer to staff. Um, Derek Ellerbrook.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Good, good. Hello, my name is Derek Ellerbrook. I reside over at 9614 Northwest 316 Place. It's in Hillsborough, just right across the freeway from North Plains. We also just went under contract for a new, one, a new build town home in Brent Hill. That being said, the reason for my comments tonight are regard, regarding the memo from Steve Miller, the planning manager, from the meeting last, the last meeting at City Council about bringing affordable housing into the vacant lot in the Brent Hill Development. Before we went under contract with our town home, we inquired of the city as well as Lennar as to the nature of what was going to happen with that property. As it's near, I mean, we're right across the street from what is, what that two-acre site is. We were informed by Lennar that nothing's really set in stone, but it's likely going to become, you know, a mixed-use development. My comments are just, I urge, you know, in light of the comments that have already, you know, all the election and all that, I've been intimately involved with what was going on with the UGV and all that. And I just urge City Council to be very open and full disclosure on everything that's going on with that affordable housing and looking into that. I mean, clearly by the memo, it looks like, you know, this is very, kind of very preliminary what's going on right now. So that, that all being said, to me personally, I don't, you know, I don't know all the laws and all the ORSes. Haven't really looked into them completely yet as far as what kind of affordable housing is required in, within North Plains. But just to me, I'm kind of on the cuff. It seems like that is not the best location to be putting affordable housing. It's far from the urban core and not on any public mass transit locations or anything like that. So at the end of the day, I just wanted to let everybody know that I'd really like to see, you know, open discussion involving everybody in the Brent Hill Development and any other stakeholders that are near what's going on with that. So in conclusion, with all of this being said, I just, I'd like to kind of go on the record that I'm opposed to that affordable housing going in as it's directly across from the town home that we're under contract to buy in North Plains. That's all.
Thank you very much. Steve, could you just give me an idea, remind us, this conversation is still ongoing at the Planning Commission, correct? And if so, could you maybe provide guidance on how Mr. Ellerbrook might be able to be a participant in that conversation?
Yeah, absolutely. As it stands right now, no application has been submitted. We've just been in conversation with the applicant about what they are considering doing on that property. So as it stands today, Lennar is the owner of the property. I understand that the developer has put some earnest money down to do some due diligence to see if it's a possibility to go forward with the type of project that they want. That's kind of where things are sitting right now. If, if they do decide to come forward with a land disapplication, we've informed them that the first thing they need to do is hold a neighborhood meeting per our rules, which would require them sending out notice to people within 250 feet of that property. Typically, that generates a lot of conversation in the community. So I'm not sure if it would, if that notice would hit Mr. Ellerbrook specifically, but it might. But he might find out about it from neighbors if it didn't. Secondly, we've also informed that there would be a type three process that they would have to go through. So it would be a hearing before the Planning Commission if they brought that application forward. So those would be two opportunities that the public would have to provide comment. They could provide comment to the developer during the neighborhood meeting over their thoughts. One thing I will share is there is a pattern book that goes with the Brent Hill subdivision. So there are some architectural elements that are required for these type of developments. So there is some control there that way. But secondly, they would also have the opportunity to find comment at the public hearing before the Planning Commission. Those would be, as, as, as far as our code is written, those would be the two public comment opportunities the public would have to share their thoughts, one with the applicant before they submit and two with the decision makers before any decision would be made. But as far, there was something there about the type of affordable housing that North Plains requires. We, we don't have any requirements. This is a developer that would like to develop affordable housing. And this is a site that they have, are looking at. I understand they're looking at a few sites and they're vetting them all. And so that's what they're doing right now.
Great, thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you.
Neighborhood, just to reiterate, neighborhood meeting and the Planning Commission meeting.
Yes, yes. And so we will notice the Planning Commission meeting. They will notice the neighborhood meeting. And it's the same notice requirement, 250 feet.
And he should just go into the city's website and click under the meetings for the Planning Commission, the agendas and see that sort of thing there, correct?
Yes, and we, we are working with our, our web host there to try and get all of our current applications also listed on the website so they could see that as well. I don't think that's up and running yet. So another way, you could just contact me directly.
Great.
Through email or phone.
Does that help, Mr. Ellerbrook?
Yes, thank you.
Hello. Anyone else? Right, seen none. Tonight is our staff night. And so first up, we have. Thank you, Mayor Lenahan, and the councilors. I provided a one-page summary of the WC Sales Library Funding Endurance Evaluation in your, in my report. And so I wanted to make sure that, well, I wanted to let you know that I've asked for some verbiage of an update for every month's report while this project is going on. I've asked the same for library board. We have it as a standing agenda item while this project is going on. But this is the first of the one-page summaries that the consultant has put out. So I wanted to just give you a chance to ask any questions about that. But I wanted to say that the library is very, having a very busy summer so far. Just full of activity of all age, from all ages. Our storytime's rehearsing at the seams. So we're trying to figure out how to get a little more room. And it's, we just had wonderful engagement from the community for this summer reading so far. So it's been really wonderful. I have, also you'll see in my report, the Friends of the Library are rolling out a new logo. And I'm really excited about it. It goes live on July 1 and there will have a little marketing campaign. But there's two designs. You have one in your packet and then there's like a horizontal one also. And. So anyway, that's. Anyone have any questions for me this evening? I just want to, I have a question for you, but I know that you put it in your staff report, but I want to make sure that you get recognition for graduating from the Northwest Plains Leadership Academy. I was able to attend that graduation and I just want to say how proud I am of you. And I know that you've been working, that you worked really hard on that. And, you know, just having you as a team member is critical. You're inspirational, not just to me as a fellow gal in the room, but also your leadership with the library and with the staff has just been tremendous. So I just want to give you that, that shout out and, and say congratulations again. Well, I appreciate that very much. And I really meant to ask me that you came. Andy Barner, our former city manager, was also able to be there. All of it was held in beavers, so we couldn't really get out of it. So thank you.
I'd like to say congratulations. I wish I could have been there.
It was a really neat program. Thank you, Robert. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As noted in my staff report, we responded to about 377 calls to service in the month of May. It was rather busy for us at NPBD. Just a couple of things, I think you've all heard about it already, but just going to close the loop on the month of May. We did have our intended ATM theft, which is, I've been told it's about an annual occurrence here in North Plains. Where somebody tried to chain up to the ATM at Elkhaw Bank and yard it out. This time, they were not successful in getting the ATM, but they were successful in getting away, unfortunately. But further investigation brought us, we were able to link it to another local case with a similar nature, similar suspect. So that's being prosecuted on their end, which has been good. And as far as the call log goes, we've seen an increase of month of May of people passing forged bills, forged cash, you know, currency at local establishments, primarily Chevron's been the target mostly lately. Oddly enough, it's been some where they put some effort behind making it look real and some where it clearly says play money meant for movies right on, but it's still being accepted. So a little bit of education piece there on the storefront to do and also some investigative R and. So that's kind of some stuff we're working on over the course of May. We also were able to host Kindergarteners came latest field trip month of May, which was fun. And we were also part of the end of the year assembly here at Parkland Elementary here just last week. So we had a lot of good community engagement this month, which has been a lot of fun also. I think it came up a couple of months ago that somebody, I think, meeting I was at, March, maybe it was, brought up if we had access to the radar sign data. And I've been working with Dustin on that quite a bit and finally got access. The, the PD can now go in and pull the data that's collected by those radar signs. So that'll be a helpful tool going forward, kind of learning that system, getting to play that. But we do have access to that. We're kind of learning how to use, utilize it, how to access it, what it's going to mean to us. But to follow up on that question that was previously asked, we do have access to that as of this week. The other thing, we recently submitted a letter of interest to be considered for some grant funds from ODOT. It's a traffic safety enforcement, basically overtime grant that's awarded on a case-by-case basis across the state. To my knowledge, City North Plains has never been awarded these grant dollars before to cover basically specific targeted traffic missions to include seatbelts, violations, speed, distracted driving and pedestrian crosswalk enforcement. I asked for cumulative $10,000 in overtime funds for fiscal year '25. And we should know in sometime July whether we're awarded that or not. I think that concludes everything I prepared for tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Coming near the Fourth of July, do you have any plans for us to pace in the people July night to assess the powder rockets or the fireworks?
There's no plans as of right now to increase an overnight or late into the evening presence.
Maybe by this June.
Yeah, that, I, I'll look into that. That has not been, we've not talked about that or looked at that yet, but I'll look and see if that's something we can facilitate. Likely we'll fall into kind of countywide, they have a kind of a firework response kind of plan or protocol thing put into place, which we'd fall into that as well. But I'll look at seeing if something we can convey staff by.
Yeah, we mentioned the city, we mentioned the city, it's countywide.
Yeah, and kind of the countywide protocol that most agencies go to is that if it, if there's no threat to life or property immediately, it's, it's just put into a log. It's not even responded to countywide amongst all jurisdictions unless it's an active threat to property or life.
Any questions?
Yes. Have you looked at West Union lately? And put up speed signs and stuff or speed checks?
We had, we had the radar trailer out there for quite a while and that got pulled back in. We've not put any of the portable signs out there as of lately. I know we've been doing some traffic, traffic details in the area, but we've not put in radar signs out there. And I think it's been probably a, probably six to eight weeks since one's been out.
And how did that go when you put it out?
I think that it got a response of people slowing people down coming into town. It was put near the Public Works, the new Public Works facility. It was put near the public works, the new public works facility going westbound. To my knowledge, that was the radar trailer, which doesn't have the ability to pull data. And so I think the next, going forward, it'd be nice knowing that they can pull data from the portable ones, bring those out there to kind of sweep them numbers.
It'd be nice if they had those with it.
Yeah. We did have a meeting and I, Dustin can probably refresh my memory because he was part of it. It might have been in the last six weeks or so with County LUT about the speed reduction request that's been put on for West Union. And I know that's in ODOT's queue, but it's a matter of time, but they are looking at that and they do have data to support the suggested speed reduction.
Then my last question, National Nine Out is coming up quick.
Yes.
And this is your first year doing it? And do you have, can you start? I'm just asking if you need help or something like that.
First off.
Reach out to us.
I always need help. You're welcome to help with anything at any time.
Been involved with that.
Yeah, and we can talk offline, but just answer your question specifically about National Nine Out. I have started the planning on that, I've reached out. It's going well. I got a good response to have some, some long person assets. My plan this year is to branch out to kind of some community partners, invite the city to have a table in the booth there. I know Public Works is planning on being there, the library and kind of branching out to other community partners that want to come and join. But all right, so right now it's on the books for Thursday, August first, here at Jesse Mays from six to eight.
I know we've done black helmets and that type of thing before. Russ has been involved with that. That's what I'm saying, if you want to reach out to any of us, we'd all be happy to help you out.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
What date is that?
Thursday, August first, from six to eight PM here at Jesse Mays.
Hey, Chief Jones.
Hello.
Quick question for you, and this might be out of your jurisdiction review, but it seems as though there is a gathering that's happening on a pretty frequent basis at a facility across Highway twenty-six that's playing pretty loud music late into evening. Do you know anything about this or involved?
E-bag leak, yes.
Yes, so I guess my question would be, I'm hearing some feedback from some residents that they are calling on emergency dispatch to place a noise complaint because it is all in outside of ten PM and even till eleven thirty PM. And it's, it's definitely audible within city limits, although this facility might be outside of city limits. Can you provide a little bit of insight into maybe how that is happening or how that's allowed? Because it's, it's become quite disruptive and I know police resources in North Plains are stretched thin in the later PM timeframe. But even getting a response from, you know, just a western deputy would be beneficial.
Yeah, I can tell you that that the property you're speaking to, it's been a longstanding nuisance for the county in regards to large-scale events, unpermitted and noise ordinance violations. And so what I would encourage people to do is to continue to call down on emergency to report those. And we, the county will have a deputy to respond to those, even though they're a lower priority call. They will send a deputy out there knowing the history of the property. And county code enforcement has also been following up with that property and will continue to do so. So that's another avenue to reach out and invoke some concerns about activity that's happening there. Because they'll, they'll follow during, sorry, during daytime hours when they work to address concerns. But it's, it's been a longstanding issue there that continues to get attention.
Yeah, and just a follow-up question. So let's say it's ten PM, multiple residents are calling on emergency while you know those concerns. Deputy responds. Is, is that, you know, hey, you need to stop all loud music. It's after ten PM noise ordinance. Or is it just, hey, you gotta stop this and they can keep it on. It's going.
Usually the typical response would be the first one would be a warning, hey, you know, you're violating ordinance, noise ordinance. And then the follow-up visits would likely result in a citation. Typically in those county ordinance violations are about five hundred dollar citation. And so those, that's kind of the enforcement auction at that time of night. But where that location is, it would fall to county jurisdiction, but obviously they have the resources on at night to respond to those and they will likely respond to those. Unfortunately, it's one of those things where the kind of squeaky look is the creep. So if it is occurring, I would encourage it, even though it's a known problem and a known location, to continue to call those in so they know it needs to be a problem.
Thank you.
There was a conversation earlier today, public comment about the park being used past closing. I know it's being late or light very late, almost ten o'clock, and we're still daytime. And the twentieth and then the three days will be around this day of year.
Yeah.
So are we, are we doing any enforcement for that? So do you, you know, it's light outside, it's asleep?
Well, it's my understanding here in the city, the park closes at dark, so it would be open even if it stayed light out. And then there's a certain time of night where the death, we don't have overnight coverage here in the city of North Plains. So that limits us and being a lower priority call like that and the amount of resources available to county in the evening, we're not going to get likely a police response for a low priority call that would be kids at a park after we go home.
Comment.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, councilors. As I said in my report, there's a lot in the report that I had about staffing. And I think one of the things that we need to have in the future is have maybe a work session to go over the bigger scale of what I'm trying to do in the public works department and what I've seen over the past year. And so some of that stuff I won't reiterate here, but might be kind of a better deal for a bigger work session kind of, kind of deal. One of the things that I wanted to mention about a comment earlier from one of the, one of the residents about obnoxious weeds and being able to do code enforcement and everything. We do not actively go out. We do not have the staff right now to actively enforce and make sure we put, you know, door handlers on everybody. But we do respond to specific complaints. We just do not have the personnel or the time to be able to do all that. But we try to get the worst of the worsts as we can. But sometimes that just requires people to report that to us and then we can address it as possible. Maybe in the future, we can become, we can basically go from a reactive force to a proactive force in the future possibly with some changes that I would like to do with our, with the department.
Quick question, if there was a great way for residents to provide that kind of information or feedback to directly?
To be able to directly call, call the city with, and leave a voicemail if I'm not able to answer, if they have a complaint. If they go to the website and go to the Public Works webpage, there is a complaint section you can get in there or my email address is Dustin.Lupinotti@NorthPlains.gov or PublicWorks@NorthPlains.gov. I have noticed also on some of the unofficial Facebook webpages, there's a lot of complaints get put out there to the public, but that's not a city-sponsored page. And so a lot of people will complain amongst their, their selves, but they actually don't bring the complaint to me. So I don't get a lot of those complaints until someone else brings it to my attention. Because I don't spend my day on Facebook when I'm in my office. So a lot of those times they will eventually get to me, but that's not the best method to take, to get my attention. The best method would probably email me or go to the form that's online. And hopefully we can have a better form and a better system here in the future, just to kind of make things a little bit clearer and easier for everybody. Just kind of communicate all that.
If they were to email info@NorthPlains.gov, that's also a way, a resource to use as well.
Correct, correct. With that, I know I backed a lot in my, my report, if there's any questions, I'm hoping.
There is a lot in there, maybe a future work session will be there.
Appreciate all that you're doing. I know each one's staff is not fun and I know you're doing the best that you can, which is what you have. And, you know, maybe you know, public, maybe something in the newsletter perhaps about mowing ditches and things like that in the front yard. You know, if that, that's an issue, I just, maybe there's a way to do that.
Mayor, that's already scheduled.
I kind of figured, Lori, but I, I just, I wanted to put it out there as well, newsletter. So that every people who are online can actually hear this and in the room.
Yep.
So if, if there's another avenue that we should look at to get the public service announcement out to folks. If anyone in this room has a suggestion, please feel free to email us at info@NorthPlains.gov. I don't have anything else to say, but other than I appreciate your work. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Steve Miller, planning manager. As you can see, I have a similar staff report to what you just heard. It has to do with code enforcement. We are working hard on this. It has become a bigger and bigger issue for the city. As more people move in and various things happen around the city, we get more calls about potential code enforcement activity. And so we would like to get a webpage put up for code enforcement on our webpage with some information about how to submit a complaint. So we're working on putting up an official form together that people can fill out and submit that form. Because right now a lot of them, sometimes it's an email that may come our way, a phone call or a drop-in citizen complaining to Bailey here at the front. And we certainly don't think Bailey should be filling all those drop-in type code enforcement complaints. So we're hoping to get a little bit more of a formal process for people to report concerns to. Excuse me. And it's been great working with the chief on this, working with Dustin on this. I think we all share the same concerns that, you know, we do have limited resource, so let's find a way to make this efficient for everybody. So we can kind of address these. I do know that Dustin indicated that maybe a more proactive approach might be appropriate, but I don't know if we have the resources for that. I think just responding to complaints right now is possibly our, our best route. It would be very challenging for us to go around and identify all the code issues that we have to enforce. So I think being the way we do it right now is sufficient until maybe a code enforcement officer could be hired on, which would be a ways down the road. So just want to let you know, we are actively pursuing this and working on it and trying to come up with a better process for everybody to submit their complaints and for us to respond to them. So it's a coordinated process. The, we did have the hearing on the marijuana dispensary last week with the planning commission. The planning commission closed the oral hearing, but left the written record open for twenty-one days. This is the three sevens, if you will. So there was a little bit of questioning on the park buffer measurement, how that was done. In my staff report, I indicated that through listening to various work sessions and whatnot, it was clear. And I was there for the very end of it. I had come on at the end. You know, my antenna started at the end of this process. And through both of those, what my understanding was, was that the five hundred foot park buffer was to be measured in a walking, driving distance as opposed to more of a straight line measurement. That has become a point of discussion through this application. Staff shared in the staff report that, you know, after listening to the minutes, it was, it was clear that it was a walking, driving type of a measurement. So between the June eighth, twenty twenty-two works, work session that the planning commission did and the July thirteenth work session that they did on this, the city's contract planner brings forward a map that says, you know, this is a continued work session. And from that last one, I've updated the map to show the walking, driving distance measurement for the park buffer. That's all the conversation I have found so far on that. So I'm going in to review your hearings that happened November seventh, twenty twenty-two to see if there's a little bit more context there. But I may need to reach out to the council to find out their recollection of how that was adopted. Because right now, it's not specified in the codified code language that it's a walking, driving measurement. It just says five hundred foot buffer. Many times, as you probably know, buffers are kind of a circular measurement in kind of a straight line fashion around whatever that is you're trying to buffer. So this is a bit unique to have it in a walk-in driving type measurement. So again, I may need to reach out to the planning or city council to see what their recollection was on the adoption of it. Because there's not a lot of clarity that I'm uncovering at the moment. And minutes and, and the recordings, some recordings didn't happen for whatever reason. So it's, the legislative history is a little incomplete, if you will. State law indicates that when you have this type of ambiguity on the codification of the code, that you can rely on the legislative history to bring clarity into what the intent was. So that's what we're trying to do, because that's how we share the information with the applicant, that the buffer was a walking, driving distance. So they relied on our conversations to prepare their land use application. Because if you were to have a five hundred foot buffer that was not measuring walk-in driving distance around, oh yeah, excuse me, I can't remember the park.
Lamorne. Lamorne.
Lamone Park.
Lamorne.
Yeah. I think everybody knows what I'm talking about. It's the park over there off of Hillcrest and that new subdivision between Blanco and whatever street that is. I'm sorry, I can't remember them all. Five hundred feet, if you were to measure from that park straight across, you would go all the way to Subway. And it would basically eliminate the whole block between Hillcrest and Pacific from having this type of use, which is why the conversation occurred to have it measured in a walking, driving distance, because it would eliminate so many potential sites for the use. And that was what was kind of carried through in the initial comments at the end of the work session was, we had a fifty-foot setback, right, for the, for the building and then a five hundred foot buffer. And then these other buffers, and it started to become apparent that we were buffering or sending back to use so restrictively that it would not be allowed to come in anywhere. And that's when the conversation shifted to doing it in a walking, driving measurement. So anyhow, I share all that with you because I'm having a hard time putting the record together. And I potentially use a written statement from the council saying, yes, we, that's how we adopted it, you know, where the buffer was to be measured in a walking, driving distance. And I've also been working with Chris to try and get something to say, yes, that that is what the legislative, legislative history says that when you have this ambiguity or it's not clear, you can rely on the legislative history for how it was adopted. So that's, that's where we're at right now. I have until Thursday to get that information into the record. Then there's seven days for anybody to review that and provide test comment on that. And then the final seven days are for the applicant, since they have the burden of proof, to provide any final, final argument to what's been submitted into the record. And then we're going to reconvene on July tenth with the city council. And the written record will remain open for all that to come in. And then they will deliberate those comments that came in during that twenty-one day period and make a decision.
It's a lot to think about.
It's a lot. Yeah, it's been, I've listened to all your meetings from twenty twenty-two. It's been interesting. It's been a good education for me.
Just so I'm clear, when do you need feedback from this body? June twenty, are you saying?
Yes, I'll send out an email tomorrow. I have a few more meetings to listen to, to see if there's anything that I can capture in those meetings to bring into the record. I'm hoping I do. I'm hoping that at your November seventh meeting, there was some conversation on that that can help me. If not, I will send an email out and CC everybody, letting you know that this is the situation that we're presently in. And that if you can help with anything, you know, to provide some clarity on your discussion in fact, then that would be helpful.
November seventh, twenty twenty-two.
That was the hearing that you had for your first reading of the ordinance. And then the October twelfth planning commission meeting was their meeting that they had to make a recommendation to you. And, and nothing came out in that October twelfth meeting. So I'm hoping that something comes up for November seventh. I haven't got to that one yet, so that'll be tomorrow. And then that's, that's really all I have, I'll turn it over now to Sharon. And then that's really all I have. I'll turn it over now to share with the updates on there. We'll take any questions that you have.
Good evening, mayor and councillors. A short one for me, but I really want to express my thanks and my gratitude for all of you who showed up on June 6 to our summer ice cream social and got to see a wonderful community event. It was a great time. We got blessed with perfect weather and an amazing turnout. I'd like to highlight also the success of our community engagement at the city booth. We had a lot of folks come through and express their opinions on downtown, but they would like to see what they thought the city needed. And that's going to be vital information as we go forward with the downtown improvement plan and implementation of that plan. I do have a bit of unfortunate news. Earlier this morning, I was contacted by our partner, Bob Hastings from Organ by Design, about the downtown design workshop. We have had to postpone that event. It was originally scheduled for this Saturday, the 22nd, but we were unable to secure the facilitators necessary to host that event. And while we could have opted to have less facilitators or less trained facilitators, we thought that it would be a better experience for our residents to wait and bring in a properly trained crew and give them the full experience of a workshop that's properly led. And then the last thing, Steve already touched on this a little bit, but we will be updating our web resources. The current setup of the planning department webpage is, features a lot of information, but not organized in the most user friendly way or accessible way. I'll be working in the coming months to update those materials and that layout to improve access and make sure we're getting things like those code inform, code enforcement complaints and applications filled out correctly, all those things that will lighten the load on staff and make sure that our residents are getting the information they need. I think both of us are open for any questions.
Just time to make one quick comment. First of all, thank you for all your hard work. And second of all, I love the idea of code enforcement being easily accessible on the website and would just bubble that up to Corinne to also include on the app to just make it that much easier to be a resident.
Thank you.
Councillor Smith?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. This night I overheard like two people talking, so I had a question about it. One was telling the other one, it was in our plant plains that maybe you should start raising chickens in your backyard because codes are very lax in our plains on, is that true or is this talking?
Our code does allow for chickens, but does not allow for roosters. And there's depending on, and I'm not positive, but I do believe you can only have so many chickens per, is it four total land? Four, four total, yes. So there is, it is allowed inside the city limits, but again, no roosters and there's a limit on the number that you can have.
Okay, I wasn't too shy. I've never thought about raising chickens though. And I don't think the H O A would approve it anyway.
Yeah, I have seen people who do this, who get some chicks and then they just kind of throw them out, you know, hey, if I'm wanting one to fly. But so I don't know your particular situation, but you know, people, people do tend to push the boundaries a little bit. So if you know something, let us know and we'll try and.
I just happened to hear a cocker die. That's okay. I didn't realize we were growing chickens here in North Plains, but I guess some people do. My other question is, the other last week, Far West construction started. Is there a way to post what we're up to before it gets started? So there's not a lot of misinformation and questions asked, what we are doing?
Yep, that's a good question. And just for clarity, it's not Far West. It's STAD development. And I, we can do something because we do have a pre-con meeting. I'm not sure where that's at. I'll have to check with the city engineer. I kind of, I'm not, I'm kind of on the front end of the land use here. And then, you know, we do the engineering review and then once the engineering review is complete, there's a pre-con meeting that usually is our contract engineer, public works, and you know, maybe, maybe clean water services or someone from the county as well. So I can check with them and find out where that's at and we could post something to let folks know. An anticipated start date based on the pre-construction meeting.
Okay. And then this one's for Ron. He did a great job doing science for North Plains. I would like to see something if it's okay, with water towers.
Water tower is a big canvas. It's something we'd have to look into. It's within our scope, but it's definitely, beautification of the city is up there in terms of the, something that we value clearly. We've got murals all over, so it's certainly something we can look into in the future. I can say that we are currently running an art call through Twolton Valley Creates for a digital mural that'll be printed onto our bus stop. So you will see more beautification art projects popping up around town soon.
Yeah, because nowadays with this wrapping, it makes it so much easier wrapping stuff, makes it so much easier to do some of this stuff. And I think it would help, you know, like beautification of the city.
We'll look into it. Thank you.
And a grant, great too.
Dustin, you had your hand up.
I don't know if these microphones are working. I just wanted to make a comment about future projects like infrastructure. That's one of the things that I'm working on, communication piece. If you look on the public work side, the future capital improvement projects and development projects that have an infrastructure portion to it, I am slowly adding that information and will have more verbiage about like who's funding the product, project and more information about it just to kind of get it out there before the project's even big. It's like I have a couple of like 90% role maps for projects and this stuff in the future. As far as developments, I don't have a lot of the development aspect, but if it does include infrastructure, I will have that information on the public work side.
And I think it would be to just really hit folks or, you know, you're getting questions from the community. I think it would be just a really great idea to email directly or, you know, encourage them to go to the website or send an email and to get the information as well, right?
Some of this stuff is posted on the Facebook page for DHOA. I think somebody came back, a good response already. But I just, before that even happened, you could do it before it happened.
And just to show, we do, there is a person in the Sunset Ridge subdivision who communicates with me semi regularly about this project. And so I have been keeping that person as informed as I possibly can based on, you know, what I'm aware of. So.
Probably standing in research.
Sure, sure. No, I just want to let you know that, you know, being the subdivision that's right across the street, there is a person there that is very active and does reach out to me on a somewhat regular basis about that project. So I just wanted to let you know that there is a community member that's, I believe, helping inform her neighbors about what's happening, which is great. I mean, I think that's fantastic.
Any other comments?
I also want to say, great job, Ron, you got the fun ice cream social.
Question about the agreement feedback. I know that I did speak with you that evening about that feedback information, but, and I know it's probably going to take you a little while to put it all together, but I could still love to have that summarized in a, you know, a form so that we can see what, like where the interest is. I think that's really important information and information, I think, that we all and the community would benefit seeing. Thank you.
What else? It's funny when you put out these informal surveys, you know, where we're using the dots. We put some stuff down that we thought would never get a dot. And it, once it starts rolling out, it's pretty fascinating. So I think you guys might find that interesting as well.
Count those dots. All right, Phil, finance department.
Thank you. So I did not have the finance report for the month of May done. Time for Lori to send it out. In fact, it is done now. I'll work for you tomorrow to get it out to you all. But I will say is that the month of May really kind of studies she goes in terms of what I report to you monthly. Well, our general fund and certainly most of our departments are are operating near or just below budget today. Where, you know, where spending could be hypothetically, we are at a budget that's two years. So it's kind of too early to tell, let's say, a department or a fund is over budget at this point, but we track and monitor it. But things kind of going into June and then July 1, we're looking at going into fiscal year 25, July 1 being overall just under budget for our funds for the most part, except for the Jesse Mays fund. But everybody knows that's a little bit of an experiment, not, not planned to be a sustainable fund. As far as kind of tracking and potentially supplemental budget with spending being higher than expected, the only one that looks most likely is the one I've reported month after month, and that is public safety. There were the traffic speed signs, radar speed signs on, it's all on Pacific. City council authorized with ARPA funds, but that one line item, I forgot to get into the budget. So you authorized it and adopted with the expectation that it was in the budget, but those numbers aren't in there. So it looks like public safety spending is well above where it should be, and that's not the case. It's, it should be, and there's some, we'll come back with us on one for that probably, depending on how the year goes. Let's see, any other ones that are kind of operating mildly? Before we kind of lost some key, a couple of key staff and going through transition, we were on the verge, Robin and I, were on the verge of doing some new accounting for grant monies that the library had been successfully getting, very successfully actually. And all that grant spending that's required by the grant, the earmark, the very specific earmark spending that the library should do on, on equipment with those grants, looks like the department is spending a little bit's budget, but really that's earmark spending. We just need to account for it a little bit differently so it doesn't look misleading. And we just track the grant spend better, better. So that's back on the table soon. Let's see, as far as water fund, water funds doing well. It's, it's, it's revenues to date are a little below 100% of where it should be, but things are picking up. So we expect this summer revenues will be above average per month and will be in a very good spot, about 100% of expected by September, October, I think at current pace. We'll talk about fees, the fee schedule here very soon. Streets and Jesse Mays are kind of where it's been all along as well. Streets are doing well. Jesse Mays, we've kind of paused rentals, so it's relatively compared to expenses, it's still in favor of the balance. But again, this is the first funding we track the Jesse Mays facility as a fund. Other things going on, I guess the other two things to report really would be, number one, the accounting position closed this past Friday. We got a ton of lessons. And, but not a huge number with a lot of public sector accounting experience, but we did get two or three that are very promising actually. So we should have some really good interviews along. So we're very happy about that. Shouldn't be an unusual or delayed process to fill that position. That's a nice development. The other thing is that we just put everything going on, being short somebody and Bailey and I kind of picking up aspects of the job not being filled yet. We've had some slip in schedule for the audits, so I'll be meeting with audit consultants this week to just kind of see where we are. Move that forward. They have already set with us audit dates for FY 24, so we're already on the books for that. So that's kind of been a positive thing. Other than that, there isn't really much more to report other than there is no aging water account reports. Mercifully, I've heard that two months in a row and I finally, I finally kind of waited on the bill to take that. So it's not in there anymore, but we'll keep track of that. We, again, I, I can't say no nice things about Bailey's work ethic in terms of working with residents who are having a hard time paying or not paying on time or very late on payments. She calls everybody and just tries to talk to them. And we have done that the way she does that. And it's, it's very successful. She is really one of the number of door hangers we do for 72 hour notice. And then the number of shut offs, she, she does a great job. So I just want to, again, give her credit for that. So with that, that's our questions.
And just to, as a reminder, you will email that to us tomorrow. Have a nice day.
From, yeah, I'll work with Lori, I'll be for Lori.
Thank you. Lots, a lot going on. Thank you all very much for making the time. All right. We have a few resolutions this evening. We have four actually to look at and to consider for approval. The first one is resolution 2269 according to Matt Lyman. The North Plains Parks and Recreation Board for a term through June 30, 2027. And I think you're here in the room. So typically what we prefer is having you come on up and introduce yourself, obviously as for record. And tell us a little bit about yourself and why, why you would take this on.
Greetings, city councilman mayor. My name is Matt Lyman. I live 30905 Northwest Tamarack Drive. It's over in Renn Hill. It's the northeastern most home. We're super excited to be here. We moved here recently from Hillsborough after we've kind of raised our kids. My wife and I have four, four boys. For the last 20 years, I've worked for a company called Action Floor Systems. It's a small sawmill in northern Wisconsin where we make gym floors. Two of our examples are here in North Plains at the Aquila and at the North Plains Elementary School. Those are our fours. So it's kind of nice to be able to see those. Over the last 20 years of sort of being a dad, father, I've spent countless nights camping with the scouts in the rain, coaching teams, being involved with different youth programs at high school. My kids all went through Liberty High School. I'm a golf coach as well. So I've done more board work with starting two different 501(c)(3)'s for the youth football program, for the football booster program at the high school. I enjoy being a part of things. I think there's a lot of value in people interacting with each other and getting out of their homes. And, you know, creating relationships with other people. I'm sure you, you know, Maslow's hierarchy, sort of this recipe for happiness. And at the very top of it is being valued by others and valuing other people. I think that, that gets, that that can be done in a beautiful way through parks and rec where people can get together and interact and support each other.
Any questions for now?
No questions. Just pretty much a thanks. You're bringing it to the meeting despite a house and already jumped in trying to help out. That's team everyone. Thanks.
Don't thank you. And thank you for your service. You guys, you put a lot of time into this office.
Well, it's just a start. I was here three, four months and tell myself, I used to hear in the parks department. So it gives me a red now.
I wanted to also say I was at the meeting when he was a candidate before the parks regulation. He came unanimously to his board tonight, so he's got a good personality and I look forward to having him on the park board. I just got him, so hope rest of you do.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor. Appreciate that.
Well, I also want to thank you for stepping up, being new in town and stepping up. That's how I got involved. Several of us have probably, you know, done that. Hey, you would make great councillor. You'd be great on a board. And somewhere along the lines, you know, serving the community and serving others, you know, just comes natural to some people. And then they want to do that. It sounds like you're that type of person as well. So certainly appreciate you stepping up and moving to North Plains for one and choosing one place to be your home and then to stepping up and volunteering in the community. So I look forward to getting to know you and your parents.
Thank you.
What's the wish of the council?
I moved to adopt resolution 2269, a 20 man item, to the north parts for your support for a term through June 30th, 2027.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any, any discussion? All right, carrying none. All those in figure say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, Monte Carey, thanks for the aye. All right, next up we have resolution 2270, the fiscal year 25 fee schedule.
Thank you, Mayor. So resolution 2270 before you is the master fee schedule for proposed for FY 25. Basically consistent with information and the preview that we gave and, you know, discussed and heard from you at the earlier June meeting. You know, you've had time review, but I'll just kind of essentially just kind of underscore some things. Most of the fees and the fee schedule, most of them. We're adjusting again for inflation this year at 3.7%. That is below the adjustment last year that was 4%. So, you know, we are seeing and reflecting inflation rates for the most part. We're seeing and reflecting inflation rates coming down, not the insane rates we had, for the most part. But there are a few different rates that are applying to a few different things. In terms of SDCs and the TDT, the county TDT and SDCs, our parks and water system development charges, SDCs, we're proposing a 3.31% increase as of July 1, and that is basically the adopted methodology is to look to see what the engineering use of record rate of inflation is for construction, construction cost index. And that's where that comes from. This is personally from the Seattle region, Pacific Northwest. The transportation SDC, which we had a conversation about and in particular, Council Sheldon, you know, mentioned concern about and question about how is the methodology, what methodology is the county used to adopt the inflation rate for the TDT? And I, we didn't get to, we didn't get a, you know, we got, you know, kind of some response by Council, Council Sheldon, but ultimately part of the rate that we've recommended here as we've recommended before, that's an 8.9% increase in the city's transportation system development charge consistent with county TDT adopted rate increase by the Board of County Commissioners, and that's consistent with the SDC methodology report that was adopted last year, 2022, sorry. And what we did identify, what I didn't even know is that the county actually uses its own index that it creates that includes the cost of land for right of way. And it's not the biggest piece of the index, but that is certainly a measurable part of it. And that's part of what's pushing that cost increase. But knowing that we're eventually going to have to buy things including right of way for transportation improvements, we continue to, to recommend that increase to stay consistent with the, what the TDT has to pay for in terms of improvements. As far as the transportation utility fee, we've, we've put forth an increase similarly of 8.9%. System of adopted in the, in the, in the SDC methodology report two years ago. This should be the last larger rate increase. I know it's, it's not a one to have something over 3, 4%, but we don't want to, we don't want to have to catch up with that cost over time, I guess is the other thing. Those are kind of the capital improvements. Rates are increased for July 1. I wanted to underscore the work we're putting before you. There are a number, and I think if you have any detailed questions about some specific land use application, we have a number of changes and even actually reductions in the cost of permits and fees for different land use application fee types. We have a few new right of way fees for events and that sort of thing, kind of based on the last year of kind of dealing with events and things. The last thing I would kind of really want to underscore, again, if you have questions specifically about right of way or, or those sorts of new fees, I think Dustin would be happy to maybe go down and talk about it a bit. Steve and or Roland can speak specifically to some of the very detailed review they did on and, and the, and the changes to the land use application fee structure that they brought forward. And what I can say that they would say is that they did, and I have the report, it's an exhaustive comparison to other agencies. And they just found in a number of cases, we actually are an expert of recharging a lot more than other agencies are. So this fee schedule before reflects some significant reductions in some cases for type 3, I bet you for these reviews. The last thing worth, that it's worth mentioning for sure is that for the first time in 12 years, consistent with the plan and the, it's basically adopted in the city budget for the volume. Since for the first time in 12 years, we have an increase in water rates for everybody. Now, our water rates as of the adopted new methodology last year, we have a base rate that everybody pays, it's just a flat monthly rate, and then a second rate based on how much consumption they do. So if you use less water, their water bill is lower, they use more, they pay more, and that's, that's, that's an equitable way to do it, of course. The base fee that everybody just kind of pays a flat fee, whether they're a home or a business or, or an irrigation account, that's going, that's proposed to go with CPI and that's 3.7%, okay? Consumption rates, the city of Hillsborough, acting on behalf of the Joint Water Commission, adopted a 4.24% increase in wholesale water volume, water rates that we pay wholesale for from the city of Hillsborough. So we are proposing a matched increase in our consumption rates based on volume. Because of that cost increase, we're putting forward a proposal for a 4.24% increase in our consumption rates because of that city of Hillsborough wholesale water rate increase that we're having to pay for cost of water. Other than that, I guess I would say those are kind of the highlights and depending on what question you might have, I can chase the information down or it might be a case of Dustin or, or Steve or Roland. So I, I will leave it at that.
Council, any questions for Belle?
There are a lot of line items here. Is it possible to get a, one with another row and add an increased percentage for each one from where, from where it was, either increased percentage or increase? I should say the change.
Counselor Page, yes, I could get a, what's, what's in that table, the, the master table you're looking at? What's hidden is the column for fiscal year 24 and it's, it's hidden. Yeah, the, the data is there, we just need to pull it out kind of in an exhibit for you to take a look at. I don't, I don't have that now, but I could do that for you to be certain.
It's so hard to get. It reminds me of how I did it when it turned me like, like, what? Cause it's just a hundred like that, so it'd be great.
Bill, can you clarify what you mean by hidden?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, hidden, from, from an Excel, no, from an Excel user standpoint, the, the column in the, in the Excel file is hidden. Yeah, no. What's happened over many, many years is that we've used basically the same Excel file for our fee schedule. And so there are many, many years of fees in that file. But because the number of years in it, would, if we included everything so you could see where every single fee had been or if we even had a fee in the past, the spreadsheet is gigantic.
Yeah, and in terms of that, I don't, I don't see a history from beginning to time to try that out. I see from last year, you're going to do a just percentage.
You, you're over here, Counselor Page, I can definitely, that's where I'd be happy to, absolutely. But what I mean by hidden is there are past years in, in that exhibit that just don't add any information for us. Of course, or, or for some, you know, for you all, it's important. Maybe somebody who's looking to build a fence, they don't care what the fee was last year, they want to know what they paid this year. So we emphasize the current year and we don't necessarily show a past year's to get this work. No problem, I know, that's, it's, it's a funny word, I, I appreciate that.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And this is for the council only in the report. Wouldn't have to be like, probably like, hey, everybody, this is a big public mass, like this is the change. Just, just so you understand.
Probably, okay.
Any questions, additional questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain motion for resolution 2270 for fiscal year fee schedule.
Can I make a wish of God knowing the changes?
I'll go ahead and move approval of resolution number 2270, change in the master fee schedule update.
We have a first, do we have a second?
All second.
Right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion?
I'll let you know the differences between one and the other before I agree with you.
Okay, my opinion would be that would be irrelevant. I mean, I understand where you're going with that and I, I personally don't care for piggybacking onto the county's methodology because I think it's flawed. But, and that's in relation to the transportation development, the TDT rate. I have been through all of the rates. There are definitely some reductions in here that I think merit a reduction because I think some of the rates were, in some cases, I think were ridiculous. I don't know where they came from, but how we developed those in the past. But I don't have a lot of reservations about the overall percentile increase. I think it's commensurate with where inflation's at. Unfortunately, we're, we're trying to keep up and keep pace with inflation. We can't control inflation, that's controlled by somebody else. So I, I think you can look at the percentages all you want, but I don't think it's going to change anything. And I, I think we need to get this done and I think we need to get it done now.
I have a question for Bill. If if this is not approved before the first of July, is there a consequence for that?
Mayor, the language of the resolution states, actually this resolution technically does two things. The first thing it does actually is to repeal the existing fee schedule. And then it approves the new fee schedule effective date adopted. So really, we just continue charging what we call fiscal year 24 fees, moving past July 1. And then at the first meeting in July, that's when you entertain the resolution again. If you don't, you know, want to, want to adopt it or you want to delay, you basically would just keep charging the existing fee schedule until you all entertain and potentially pass a new resolution.
So in discussion, any other discussion or comment questions?
I just called a question.
So we have a motion on the table and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, Lori, do you need?
I do not. Okay. Thank you. I've got Counselor Page as the name.
Thank you, okay. Item 9C is resolution 2271 for fiscal year Washington County Sheriff's Office contract. Rob?
Thank you, Mayor Lenahan. This is resolution 2271. And if it seems that you approved the contract sheriff's office, you did effective 2022 and the actual overriding contract runs through 2027, but this is an adjustment in fees and I'll explain. We have two deputies and a sergeant that you're paying for. But up and up through the end of the fiscal year, June 30th, the county is paying for a quarter of the cost of, of one of the deputies. And so this would bring us at par with what our fee should be and it would be a 3.7, 3.7% increase. I'm very familiar with the contract. It's very similar to the contracts we had in Cornelius who also contracted with the sheriff. But there's very little change with this. And it is the same contract. This, this will just be super imposed on it, basically. Be happy to answer any questions if I can, and if not, the chief is here and Bill's here also.
All right, any questions for Rob and or the chief? An additional 0.25 that we are adding, that adds additional time on or length of time that they are on duty for the city. Any questions for the chief?
It increases our deputy coverage by 10 hours a week. We get an extra 10 hours of a deputy in the city. But as far as the length of day of service, that, that's not reflective as an increase.
Any other questions or comments?
Is this an actual increase, an added increase, or is it just a balance out of the pain? We have two more hours of actual plus 10, or is it, do we just?
No, it's actually the deputy in the city for 10 more hours a week than what they were for.
One last question. Is there any, any, can you provide a reasoning why? Apologize, my mic was not on. Can you provide a, the reasoning why maybe deputy wouldn't be extended two more hours into evening? Or is it just to provide overlap during the day during high call volume?
I'm sorry, just to clarify your question as to why to increase the 10 hours or why not increase, extend the hours for here during the day?
Yeah, so I guess, I apologize. So would you overlap the additional 10 hours with another deputy during periods of high call volume? Or would you extend that into maybe coverage that isn't currently?
All right, I think I understand. And if I don't, I'll clarify nasty. But what, what, right now, our schedule is based off a, basically statistical analysis, days of the week, call volume by hour of the day. And we stack it based on the highest call volume that we get, public man calls to the city. And so what this extra 10 hours does is it's basically going to mirror each other. They're going to be here the same 10 hours on Wednesdays. But what it does is it gives us double coverage within the city to allow them to kind of expand their enforcement action, do some more targeted enforcement stuff within the city and just have an increased presence. And it gives us kind of some flexibility to accommodate, should there be an investigation or something that would take them outside of the normal operating hours, or it provides some more of that flexibility as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the question is, when's this, when, there's a pass down, it should have changed, happens every day at, in, in, in Hillsborough. It takes up, you know, the time is you'll be in there and you're, and then the slot, and then they have to, as soon as suit up. And then drive here. Is that going to be part of that, the, the pass down driving here time, are they 10 hours? Or is it going to be 10 hours for us?
So that's not actually how our deputies respond on a daily basis now. They actually have assigned take home vehicles that they dress down in uniform at home and clock on as soon as they're in their car and they're driving to our city. So they don't actually go to Hillsborough headquarters and attend a briefing or anything that doesn't, that takes them out of the city for any dedicated period of time. So from the time they're in their uniform in their driveway to the time they're in city, they're on the clock working for the city in our planes, providing any kind of response to our calls here. So there isn't any undedicated time going to anywhere for a briefing or to suit up.
And they don't have a trap though, right?
I'm sorry?
And they don't have a trap though?
No, they do not have a trap though. No, they both live relatively close. Our current deputies live relatively close. And if they do attend briefings at Hillsborough, it was like you're referring to, that can be done remotely via their computer here at the office or anywhere in segment.
And to be clear, are we going to see them more on the daytime or evening hours?
So that the hours of the day that they're working aren't changing as what they are currently now. What we're getting is, right now, what was happening is we'd have a deputy seven days a week for 10 hours a day. We're getting two deputies now for a full four days a week, so 80 hours of coverage. So on Wednesdays, we're going to have two deputies for the same hours working in the city in our plane. So they double up. They were a common Wednesday schedule. And so they're going, both going to be here on the, on Wednesdays together. Okay.
Any additional questions?
I, I will clarify just one point that you probably saw in the report. Although we have 80 hours of coverage, what we were able to negotiate with the county was to not pay a full 2.0 FD and differential pay. So what we basically are paying for our backfield double coverage on Wednesdays, which is a little bit of a cost saving measure for us. We still have 70 hours that we're guaranteed to have in the city, but we're staffing with the, if that makes sense.
And I can assume that the, just the reporting and clarity and transparency of all that will continue and transparency of all that will continue to be in part of your monthly, uh, report. So we'll, we'll see calls for service and all of the above.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, um, any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion for resolution twenty-two seventy-one.
I move to adopt resolution two, one, seven, seven to approve Amendment five of July one, twenty-twenty-two, intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement with Washington County Sheriff's Office for Public Safety Services.
I'm in order, there's a, uh, several motion has screws there, it's not two, one, six, seven, it's that two, two, seven, one. So you need to hear that.
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to.
Sure.
I got it. Okay, I'll amend my motion, uh, and, uh, move to adopt resolution number two, two, seven, one to approve the Amendment five of the July first, twenty-twenty-two, intergovernmental agreement with Washington County Sheriff's Office for Public Safety Services.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried, thank you. Um, and then lastly, ninety is resolution twenty-two seventy-two, creating the seasonal library program with assistant position. Robin? It's this.
Uh, Mayor, councilors, I will see in the supplemental staff report, uh, the reasoning for this request. Uh, we, um, had a retirement, um, right of summer reading was beginning and, uh, we had an immediate need for some additional, um, program and event support. And so, after talking with staff, um, we decided on a position that didn't include all of the library assistant one tasks, uh, because that's quite a bit of training to, uh, create library cards and work on the desk and so forth. So this would be, um, a position with a different pay scale uh, that would be mainly just focused on, um, program and events support, some direct, um, patron help in the library, on computers, um, and the summer reading, all different, uh, events, seasonal events in the library.
Any comments or questions for Robin?
You have, uh, if I may, do you have a, a way in mind or applications?
We, we can post it until you approve that to create the position. Uh, however, um, we think there may be some, um, recent college graduates possibly might be interested or, and so forth in that community.
Okay, great, thank you.
Or high school. And these are for a limited duration, this position, so we only created three steps.
All right, any other comments or questions for Robin?
If I may, yeah, I should say.
Well, it, it really will depend on the seasonal need because we wouldn't recruit someone onboard, um, unless we couldn't staff with the current, couldn't staff the events with the current, um, employees. But we have plans in the budget to cover this, it's a lower pay scale than our current entry level position. So there's some potential cost savings, um, to address seasonal needs this way versus hiring, um, additional entry level folks.
There, I, uh, I'd like to, uh, move to adopt versus two, two, seven, two.
All right, we have a first, any, go ahead, there's a second?
I'll second you.
We have a first and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried, thank you, thank you, Robin. All right, uh, item ten is unfinished business, doing business. I'm gonna jump down to all eight for city manager report, Rob.
Thank you, Mayor, um, I will make this report brief unless there are questions. We apparently normally do not have a council meeting on the, uh, the second meeting in August, which would be the nineteenth. I think our staff will be a little skinny, uh, participating in the council meeting that I would recommend we cancel that meeting on August nineteenth. And, uh, otherwise, I'd be happy to answer any questions, staff covered, uh, several things I was going to. And so, uh, if you have burning questions or I can research something for you, please let me know, please ask, and I'll be happy to follow up.
Would you be willing to give us a brief summary of the, um, recruitment? And where we are with that?
Um, with the recruitment, um, I've provided, uh, information requested by the consultant and, uh, have delivered that to them and so there'll probably be about a two-week hiatus. Uh, we've asked them to prepare something similar to your twenty-seventeen search. Uh, the search that, you were nice enough to invite me to sit in on one of the panels and, uh, choose Andy or recommend choosing Andy and he was a great, uh, I think he turned out to be a great success for the city. And, uh, we'll be talking to you, uh, about a draft and see if you have anything further you'd like to change on it. But it, it pretty much echoes, uh, the previous one. And the consultant asked for an awful lot of information that we assembled and it's in their hands now, so.
Any additional questions for that topic? Um, in looking at the council schedule, uh, calendar schedule, I see on September third, um, Commissioner Willie is scheduled to be here in addition, um, under work session for council rules. I know we do need to follow up on that, um, and, um, provide additional feedback, to staff and to Chris Cream, um, and that's something that we do need to follow up on. So, um, would it, would, would you be willing to maybe reset, you know, the, uh, unless you all have your council rules, um, in the documents that we initially had looked at a few months ago? But, um, if we need to have that reset out because I think it's really important that we finish that work, um, and work on getting that codified. And I, I think Counselor Sheldon provided feedback.
Yes, I did.
Yeah, um, but it would be really, um, super helpful and handy if we could, uh, as a group, follow up on that and make sure that we get that feedback back to staff. So, um, if you don't have that in your inbox and you would like that reset, um, talk to, uh, talk to me or Lori after the meeting, okay? That's good. And council reports, anything to report?
Went to the city council, uh, went up for the legislature meeting, uh, last Wednesday. It was quite busy, it was, uh, we used to have the marijuana discussions, it was a full house, I wasn't very well. This was another full house meeting. The sentiment was mostly not in my backyard, we didn't get to it, but nothing indeed, right? So that's the same discussion we had from before. There was a vague tension of whether it was either crow flies or pardon, or have people walk. I'm trying to recall that it is a while ago, it's been a long mission since, and I'm getting kind of old. I think when we revisited this, it was according to driving along, enabled to allow it to happen. Otherwise, I think the discussion was, if we did do that, then we know this is not a nice activity. So I think that was a discussion, but I, I actually walked and think about that, try to remember. Yeah, I said it was raised, there was something I said before. So, I think that was the reason I did that. But again, I'm old and people might, so.
Oh.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Page, um, let's see, Counselor, did you do your part somewhere? I'm sorry.
Yes, I did, that was the, uh, yeah, and, and, and also the, uh, economic development, uh, supposed to be the coffee shop coming into town. So the other, Karen's husband was part of working with, so she said, oh, I didn't know that, so I said, I gotta keep the bidding, instead of being taken away. I said, that's okay, that was a fun day, it was a good time, so we're well, I remember, it's gonna be, I think the last building in the, uh, that's a lot of the light though. Yeah, right, right, close to.
Well, I've got one that needs to change, I'm pretty positive. The, uh, library boards stay in seventh, it's sixth.
You have changed it to six?
Correct, so, that's not have confusion on it, it says here Thursday. It's seven, that's Thursday is because of two nineteen, but it's six o'clock. And my other one is the excellent plants that will be in town, August twenty-first. So I have the library board, I'd like to switch with somebody.
All right, if you can switch with, uh, Counselor Smith, um, I've seen him in a meeting, that would be great. Uh, any other council reports?
I will.
Go ahead, Bill, you go first.
You're, you're first.
Okay, be short, okay. Let's call, uh, have good news, uh, a good friend of mine that, and of the city. I hope, uh, Mr. Colin Walter, he passed away here last week. I'm going to his service on Fridays the twenty-first, it's twelve thirty. So I knew those that would want to come, I, me too, I, I was, I was, about a month ago, I stopped in. He, of course, takes care of his wife, you know, she's got cancer. So there's gonna be a lot of, you know, things happen there that are not, he was the caregiver. And I had him all signed up for the, for the North Plains Historical Society meeting in the fall and talked about, it's all he had, that he do. I didn't write it down because I wouldn't remember after I left the house, but now we got home, I forgot all, so. So I had him, I had him locked in, the, the guy upstairs says, nope, you can't have it, so. So anyway, so I will attend that, he'll go, basically.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes, I attended the Metropolitan Area Communications Commission. And during that, uh, meeting, we, uh, tackled a number of things, uh, probably the two most notable were the budget, uh, fiscal year twenty-five, the budget, just a little over, uh, almost nine million. And then, uh, we approved all of the recommendations for the grants, calls, uh, the spring package, those were all approved as recommended. And there was, uh, some discussion from some of the, uh, providers. A little bit of discussion, nothing unusual, uh, number of things about the FCC and rights of way and where we're kind of at in that and where that litigation falls. And, uh, the final thing we did was go into executive session and then we approved, uh, a pretty healthy increase to, in compensation to our administrator, Thaddeus Gerard. And, uh, that's pretty much the nuts and bolts of that meeting, but it went pretty well and it was well attended, so. I didn't get elected as anything.
Um, the last June, the last Wednesday, June twelfth, I attended the Lead Organ Cities Small Cities, um, event. Um, they kind of do a road show around, um, and they were in banks last Wednesday, so I was able to attend that. Um, and it was a legislative update, they gave updated updates about, uh, what's happening in the legislature or what happened. And then, um, we talked about future, um, topics for, uh, the upcoming session. Um, in addition, we had a pretty lively discussion about local control and home rule and UGV expansions and all kinds of wonderful stuff. Um, and so I was pleasantly surprised on how we actually educated them, the Lead Organ Cities, on a few topics, um, as far as, uh, discussing local control and home rule and what that meant for the city of North Plains and Banks and a couple of other cities that were there. So it's interesting just to see, I mean, it was interesting to get their feedback and I'm hoping that we'll have some follow-up on that, on those two items because Lead Organ Cities, um, champions for home rule and local control, right? And we all know what that means, hopefully we all know what that means. And so I'm really, uh, going to follow up with Ariel Nelson, Nelson, to make sure that, um, see how the Lead Organ Cities can, uh, continue to advocate for cities about local control and home rule. Um, because what's happened here in North Plains is, um, starting to bubble up in other cities across the state of Oregon, especially in our neighboring city of Banks. So there's a lot of concern, um, for what occurred here, that's occurring elsewhere in the state. And so it was a pretty, as you can imagine, it was a pretty lively discussion, but, um, something that they needed to hear. And, um, they need to do more advocacy, especially for the smaller cities across the state. So they outweigh the larger cities. Um, I think one question was, how many cities under ten thousand in the state of Oregon? And I think Ariel said somewhere around a hundred ninety-four, five, or six versus forty, you know? Um, so, uh, they do a lot of advocacy work and, um, I'm gonna hold her feet to the fire. And, uh, so that was a really great, a great, um, great meeting. Also, the Lead Organ Cities has their annual conference in October, I wanna say it's in Bend. Um, they have applications for scholarships open right now. So if it's something that you've been interested or wanting to do, um, to go to the conference for three days, uh, two, three days in, in Bend, um, I would highly recommend that you hop over to their website, the Lead Organ Cities website, and then, um, work with staff just to see if that's something that can, um, that can make that work for you. Um, it's a great opportunity to network, they always are looking to get other, you know, city councilors there and then, and then city administrators there, you know, like, um, the staff there. So it is definitely a, a time where you can network with other folks, um, across the state of Oregon and learn a lot of great information and be a part of some really great conversation. So if you're interested, see me after the meeting and I'll try to point you in the right direction, okay? So that's it, oh, and then, um, Washington County Coordinating Committee, heavy on the metro, not too, uh, engaging uh, for us folks out here in Western Washington County. But, um, I do need to bring it to your attention that we need an alternate. So I think Andy was the alternate for the WCCC. So, uh, there seems to be conversation that maybe Counselor Page was the alternate for the WCCC. So, yeah, so maybe we can talk about that in the meeting just to make sure. But somehow, we're gonna have to find an alternate just so that, that there's a placeholder there, um, for that position when I cannot attend those meetings, okay? So, anything else from councilors? Chad? Chris? We're good? All right, well, thank you all for hanging out and, uh, for the lively discussion and I'll go ahead and close our meeting at the fifty-nine P M. And I'll go ahead and close our meeting at eight fifty-nine PM.